Calling the Mayor's City Council, a regular meeting of August 20th, 2019 to order. The invocation will be given by Councilman Donovan.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom and a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
(inaudible) United States of America. To the Republic where justice stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling? Yes. Mr. Kirchner?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Landik?
Here.
Mr. Marne?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Approval of denuts for the regular meeting of July 2nd, 2019.
Who the proof?
Second.
Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Public hearings, we have none. Tabled legislation, we have none. New legislation, ordinance number 19-0-058.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation to participate in the statewide municipal bridge inspection program and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Swigger, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. Cities required to inspect all city-maintained bridges annually and report the results of the inspections to the Ohio Department of Transportation. There are five bridges that fall within this category within the city of Mennor, and that include White Oak Drive, Beaver Creek Drive, Norton Parkway, and the two bridges over the railroad tracks on Heasley Road, the overpass. For the past six years, the Ohio Department of Transportation has performed the inspections of city bridges under a bridge inspection program agreed to by the city. Program has been and will be continued to be funded by the state of Ohio. The annual inspection services have performed, are performed by a qualified consulting engineering firm hired by the state of Ohio. ODOT is currently seeking to renew this program and is requesting new legislation to renew the agreement for inspections to be done in the years 2020, 2021, and 2022. It's recommended that the consent legislation be approved to allow the city to continue to participate in the program. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Ordinance number 19-0-058 has been approved. Ordinance number 19-0-059.
An ordinance authorizing transfers of funds, advances of funds, and revisions to appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Malinowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. Members of the council, this does several things. Firstly, it authorizes two permanent cash transfers, as noted in the ordinance. Firstly, $350,000 representing one-sixth of the cost of the amphitheater. That's from our Community Rec Fund into the amphitheater fund. Secondly, the second permanent transfer represents one-quarter's worth of estimated medical claim to fund our self-insured medical fund. Section two is the temporary cash advance that represents the balance due on the amphitheater that will be paid off in the future with permanent transfers. And finally, section three has several appropriation revisions. The item most noteworthy is the TIF fund has a $400,000 amount, which is well in excess of a subsequent ordinance to cover the Diamond Center traffic signal that you'll see in a subsequent ordinance. And then a few grant appropriations are also listed. I would recommend approval of the entire ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Ordinance number 19-0-059 has been approved. Ordinance number 19-0-060.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to purchase parcel number 16D7770000410 from the state of Ohio and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is quite an interesting one. We're actually going to be buying back some of our old property. When the city did the vacation for Kelly Drive in order to make the Visconti project a reality, it was the expectation that the portion that would be vacated to the Visconti project would be adequate for them to fulfill their project requirements. It is not, so they have therefore pursued the other half of that roadway which went to ODOT because since they are the adjacent property owner next to the highway. They have agreed to sell it back to us at fair market value for economic development purposes. We will turn it around right away and sell it immediately back for the same value to Visconti to allow their project to continue forward. It represents approximately just over a tenth of the nature.
Thank you. Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Ordinance number 19-0-060 has passed. Ordinance number 19-0-061.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to award a bid contract to Summit Painting for the sandblasting and painting of the Civic Center pools and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President. And we are joined this evening by Recreation Superintendent Nita Justice, who I'll ask to explain this to you. But to remind you that this is a budgeted item. We decided it was easier and better to take the time at the end of the pool season, make these improvements. Ms. Justice?
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. So, three bids proposals were received on July 24th for the Civic Center and Wingpool sandblasting and painting for the Parks and Rec Department. Based upon the review and their experience, Summit Painting submitted the best proposal for the sandblasting. It's therefore recommended the contract be awarded to Summit Painting of Willoughby in the amount of $75,200.
Thank you. Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Ordinance number 19-0-061 has passed. Ordinance number 19-0-062.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to award a bid contract to Param Electric, Inc., for the Menards Access Drive at Diamond Center Signalization Project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President. Although counsel is aware that the traffic analysis that was performed by Menards at the project development, during the project development phase, does not compel a traffic signal at the intersection immediately, I think counsel has determined that we would like to go forward with this sooner rather than later. So, we were able to get this bid out as recently as last week. And Mr. Swigger will tell you about the results.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. Bids were opened on Friday, August 16th, for the Menards Drive at Diamond Center Traffic Signalization Project. The project will provide a new traffic signal at the intersection of Diamond Center Drive and the Menards Home Depot driveways. The bid package consisted of a base bid and one alternate. One bid was received with a total combined base and alternate bid price of $208,116.30. It's been determined that Param Electric Incorporated of Wadsworth, Ohio submitted the lowest total combined bid. The engineer's opinion of probable construction cost of the base bid and the alternate was $335,000, not including, or including, traffic signal poles, which we are purchasing separately. Review of the bid indicates its performance with all contract requirements. It is therefore recommended that a contract be awarded to Param Electric Incorporated, who are experienced and qualified to perform this work, in the amount of $208,116.30. Scheduled final completion date for the project is March 27th, 2020. Thank you.
Mr. President, counsel, just, I'll add one thing to that. We're asking you to approve the base bid and the alternate, which allows for the opportunity for us to do temporary signalization there if we choose to do so. Quite frankly, we're not really seeing any major traffic delays there on a regular basis. There's a couple of days when they first opened, but we're just not really seeing it. So, we're not, we haven't decided yet whether or not that's warranted to go forward just yet on that. What we will be doing is we're working with the Home Depot across the street from that intersection to get their driveway approach painted to align up with the Menards, which has recently been painted, make it a little bit more logical to come in and out of both of those drives.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I could, and I think you answered half of my question, and Menards has been in process for a long time. Did we have to wait for a traffic study at this point after they opened so we could see if a traffic signal is warranted there? Or, I mean, it seems like it's sort of late that we're deciding to put this traffic signal in now that they're open and now that, you know, there's potential for a signal to really be needed there. And a follow-up question to that was, how soon can we get the temporary signal in place?
So, again, the traffic study that preceded the project indicated that the project signal was not warranted there. It actually recommended a four-way stop, which we were not in favor of. It was always our intention to see what kind of traffic patterns exist before we move forward with it, which is why our development agreement deferred the cost of that signal, deferred it onto the city, and trade, the trade-off being the Menards picking up the cost of the extension of the westbound traffic lane extension. We are continuing to do observations and we will do some traffic counts. Difficult to really make any quick decisions on that when a store just opens. We've seen it stabilize already. And, you know, you've got to understand that there's benefits and detriments to putting a signal there. Right now, probably, other than the busiest peak times, I would say maybe midday when people are coming and going for lunch, and perhaps on peak times during the weekend, every other time you're getting in and out of that location in seconds. You put a traffic signal there and the people that are getting out now in 10 seconds are going to wait a minute and a half to get out. So, it's a bit of a trade-off. We're going to watch it. If we have to, we can, we can put the temporary signals up. That comes at a cost. If we feel it's in the best interest of public safety, we'll absolutely do that. And I'll let Mr. Swigger give you some idea on the timeline.
Just to follow up, if I might, wasn't the alternate B the temporary signalization?
Yes.
So, those would be like singular pole-mounted signals that people may or may not see? Is there, but we should hear.
The temporary signal would be basically two pole, would be two wooden utility poles with strand wire suspended between them diagonally over the roadway with traffic signal facing, you know, in each direction.
And just one more question, if I might. It just seems like we had a, I thought that this was going to be $335,000, but it's a third loss that.
What you don't see included in this bid is the pole cost, which is about.
It's about $40,000 for the pole. So, it's actually in the engineer's estimate, but not in the bidder's number.
Right.
So, it's not quite as large of a difference as it would seem.
I remember the poles, last time, they took like six months to get here for.
Correct.
Heasley, Whalers Cove.
They could take some time.
That's still about, about the case, about six months for the permanent poles to be delivered, to be manufactured, manufactured and delivered. So, the lead time's still about six months. If we do decide to move forward with a temporary signal, those, we could probably put that together in about six weeks, as long as there was, we could get power supplied.
And are they going to be the decorative type that we installed over at Whalers Cove in Heasley?
Permanent ones would be.
Was a nice-looking pole.
I think going forward, you know, in any important intersections in town, that'll be our style.
Thank you.
Okay. Counsel?
Yeah, to the administration, is Menards weighed in on the signal, whether they're anxiously waiting it or not?
Not wait, they're somewhat indifferent to it.
Thank you.
Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
They'd like to keep them in there as long as possible, Bruce.
Is that why they did the traffic study at 3:00 AM?
Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Move to approve. Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Ordinance number 19-0-062 has passed. Resolution number 19-R-107.
Resolution declaring estimated assessments for the construction of certain sidewalks in Zone B associated with the 2018 pedestrian safety program in the city of Mennor, ratifying and confirming publications, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Swigger, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. The city sidewalk contractor A&amp;J Cement Contractors Incorporated has recently completed repairs to the sidewalks in Zone 4B. Approximately 390 slabs of concrete sidewalk were replaced through assessment on 178 properties, with the cost of construction being approximately $69,000. A typical five-by-five, four-inch concrete slab costs about $178 to replace. An additional cost of $31.38 per property for the administration, administrative cost of mailing and advertising is added to the estimated cost of assessment for property owners. Total cost of the assessment portion of the work included construction costs, administrative costs, and interest, and it comes to about $79,544. This legislation is a resolution per the High Revised Code declaring estimated estimates, estimated assessments for the construction of sidewalks over parcels shown on Exhibit A. Upon counsel approval of this resolution, a notice will be published in the News Herald for three consecutive weeks, as required by the High Revised Code. The notice will state that the list of assessments is on file in the Office of the City Engineer for inspection by the public. Property owners will have two weeks after the notice of publication ends in the News Herald to file any objections to the cost of the assessments in writing to the clerk of counsel for review. Once any objections to the cost of assessments have been resolved and final assessments have been prepared, a final ordinance of assessment will be presented to counsel for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel? Mr. Landy?
Yeah, just a comment on looking at this resolution and the next one. In 4B especially, I see the city's cost is $174,000, extremely high compared to the assessed work. And it says that those are either street trees and manholes. Can you tell me if it's mainly trees in this section in 4B?
I would have to review the numbers and get back to you on that one, Councilman.
On the next resolution too, we have a significantly higher amount on the city work, and that may include the ADA ramps. But it seems like, I know it was, the administration, for counsel's information, the administration recently reminded me that it was counsel's prerogative to pay on tree-related, tree-lawn-related tree roots. So, it's a significant cost relative to tree roots and a recurring cost possibly too.
From a number standpoint, the city's responsible to replace about 100 more slabs of street trees and manholes, but I would have to get back to you on the breakdown between the two.
Okay. Yeah. I'd appreciate a follow-up on that, Dave.
Right. Mostly storm, storm store manholes.
Yes. A breakdown on both these sections.
I can do that.
This resolution and the next one.
Will do.
Thank you.
Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Ordinance number 19-R-107 has passed. Resolution number 19-R-108.
Resolution declaring the necessity of repairing and reconstructing certain sidewalks in Zone 1B and 1C associated with the 2019 pedestrian safety program in the city of Mennor, requiring that abutting property owners repair same, ratifying and confirming notices, authorizing repair or reconstruction of said sidewalks by the city engineer, and in certain cases, providing for assessment of cost and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President. One thing I'll add to that, Mr. Landy, too, as well, is that as we have progressed through the years now with the projects, the public is much more aware of them. They're taking more action more often than they did in the early phases. So.
Proactively.
Yes. So, we're seeing a lot more people take care of their parcels on their own, on the slabs on their own, so that you're seeing that disproportionate city cost going up compared to what it was in those earlier phases, which is a good thing. Part of that is also due to the fact that the contractors that do this work know that there's more, that this work is available every single year in the city. It's getting a little bit more competitive, and they're doing a pretty good job of, they know exactly what phases we're going into. So, they're sending notices out to people ahead of time, telling them, hey, we're available and we can do it cheaper than what the assessed cost will likely be. So, that's what we want to see. All right. Mr. Swigger, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. Between May and July of this year, the city completed sidewalk inspections in Zone 1B and 1C of Ward 1. Locations of properties with deficient sidewalk have been identified in Exhibit A, and it's attached to this legislation. A total of 471 out of 789 parcels were found to have deficient sidewalk. 1,466 sidewalk slabs were found to have deficiencies requiring repair or new construction. Of this total, the city will be replacing 735 slabs adjacent to existing street trees and storm store manholes. Additionally, the city will be reconstructing 107 handicap ramps at intersections. Homeowners will be responsible for the remaining 731 slabs to be repaired or replaced. This legislation is a resolution of necessity, which declares that it is necessary to repair the sidewalk deficiencies identified in Exhibit A in accordance with Section 729 of the High Revised Code and Section 913 of the Mennor Municipal Code. Upon counsel approval of this resolution, property owners will be notified and provided 45 days with which to make the repairs. Repair is not made within 45 days, the 45-day timeframe will then be made by the city sidewalk contractor, with costs being assessed back to the property owner. Thank you.
Counsel, I would add to that, that we expect that if you adopt this resolution, we'll send those notices out tomorrow. There is a public meeting scheduled for September 19th here at City Hall from 5:30 to 6:30 to invite the homeowners to get any of their questions answered.
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Resolution 19-R-108 has passed. Second reading, we have none. Third reading, we have none. Brings us to the manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just advising counsel that approximately 6,500 non-filer letters are being mailed out by Rita today to taxpayers that have neglected to file their municipal income tax returns for the last five tax years. That's 2013 through 2017. A year ago, the same program identified almost $900,000 in liabilities, of which we were able to recover $372,000. So, the program has gone particularly well. It's worth pointing out, correct me if I'm wrong, David, but we did about over 8,000 letters last year, right?
Yes.
So, that number's going down. We expect it will continue to go down as long with, if we keep this up. So, it's been, it's been good for us so far. City has also authorized FirstEnergy to move forward with the first phase of transition from incandescent to LED lighting fixtures for our city street lighting. This essentially is a test phase to ensure that we're satisfied with the changes. There are about 60 lights that are involved in this, in a total of four neighborhoods, one neighborhood in each ward. So, I have distributed a map to you just before the meeting started, so you can get a look at where those test areas are. Everyone, Mr. Kirchner, seems to have gotten that map. But we'll make sure you get it. And so, we have every expectation that it's going to work out just fine. As counsel's aware, we've been using LED lighting for the city-installed decorative lighting that we've done on 615 and Mennor Avenue and Civic Center Boulevard. So, we expect that this will be just fine as well, but we thought we would allow the public to get exposed to it before we make any final decisions on a longer-term phased approach to doing the rest of the city. Tonight's Mennor Rocks concert features the Boy Band Review with hits of NSYNC, Backstreet Boys, New Kids on the Block, and other classics. Next Tuesday is the final Mennor Rocks concert and the season of the season, and we'll be featuring the McCartney years with the music of Paul McCartney. This weekend is, of course, Mennor City Fest, which kicks off at 4:00 PM on Friday. A free concert Friday evening features Kings Highway, which is a Tom Petty tribute band, which will start performing at 7:30. Saturday, we'll begin with the City Fest Parade at 10:00 AM. Civic Center Grounds will open at noon on Saturday for all activities. The Color Dash and Walk is again at 6:00 PM, followed by a free concert at 7:30 that will feature the Journey tribute band Escape. The night will, as with our past tradition, finish with fireworks at 10:30 PM on Saturday. And the public can find a school schedule of events on our website, as well as on Facebook. A reminder that all city pools have closed for the season. The Spray Park at Walsh will remain open through Labor Day, September 2nd. Road Repair Program Concrete Contractor has recently completed all concrete work within the city. There are some minor punchless items that are yet to go, but essentially, we're closed out for the year for both the asphalt and concrete contracts. And finally, we have several new businesses that we wish to welcome to the community. Of course, Menards at 9,600 Diamond Center Drive, the Indian Kitchen at 9,552 Mennor Avenue, Grandma Sue's Kitchen at 6316 Center Street, and Starbucks at 7827 Reynolds Road. We thank them for their investment, and we wish them great success for the future. That's all.
Gee, having said that, we're now at clerk's correspondence.
Counsel's and receipt of Mennor Municipal Court month-end reports for June 2019 and July 2019. That is all.
Thank you. Commission and committee reports. We're in possession of the Community Arts Commission, May 2nd, 2019, and June 6th,